Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. The first order of business is to basically do a roll call and make sure who's here and then the next thing we'll need a motion to let trustee Kritzmeyer attend remotely, so.
Trustee Borowski.
Here.
Trustee Micho.
Here.
Trustee O'Connor.
Here.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Here.
Trustee Tanucci.
Here.
Those president Jake.
Here. And now we need a motion to allow trustee Kritzmeyer to attend this.
So moved.
Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Micho, roll call.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
No, no kidding.
Trustee O'Reilly. Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, you are in the meeting if you all rock. Judge Legent?
To the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
Consider the public.
Do you think so? With this thing.
One mission under God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone, first meeting of the year, it's 2023. Wow. The first item on the agenda, we have HOA visitors. Is anyone here from Oak Island, Sebastian Pigeon? How about Stuart Osterman from Sherman's Pine Valley? How about Susan Klein, Salem Lake, representing Salem on the lake? I take that as a no. Next item on the agenda is public comment, does anyone have any public comment that's here tonight? Oh right, go ahead Ryan.
Ryan Messner, President of the Village Association. I just want to add some clarification as far as the downtown. We had a lot of time to ask dialogue behind the scenes from your board last meeting on the 14th. Just want to make sure that details are clarified and make sure details are appropriate and make sure that our business and your business model is aligned, so our partnership is good. Facts have to be facts, we cannot mistake on there because it does create a big behind the scenes controversy that we're dealing with right now. Explain to some of you folks what occurred, is occurring behind the scenes. I just, I want to go on public statement to make sure that we're all on the same page because I've got some other things that I'm dealing with now because of the action that occurred. So I just, I thought it was important that I just come here and state that, just to make sure when we do speak, we are speaking to the facts, so that there's no issue in the back end of it. So again, that's all I can say. I had a discussion with that.
Yes, you want to, you want to add to that?
Yeah, Ryan and I had discussion after the last board meeting informing Ryan as President of the HDL GBA that the board had voted to not disperse the SSA funds to the HDL GBA until documents that were required by the SSA agreement were presented. Cleared up any misunderstanding that the board had said that they were not going to give them the money because that's not accurate and if it was perceived that way. I don't think that's what the perception was in regards to that, I think it was, once we find the documents and have the documents that we're going to move forward. There were a couple other issues, they, one thing that came up is that the budget's due according to the SSA agreement and I think Vic's aware of this, could be compiled with that, that it's due on October 31st. The HDL GBA doesn't begin their budget, from what Ryan's communication to me is the HDL GBA doesn't begin their budget process until January. So there's a, it's evident that we won't get it by that deadline and it's up for the board's consideration if they want to adjust the resolution to reflect the budget date and the requirement for the budget, I don't know why that date was chosen, I wasn't here at the time, I don't know what the communication was on that. The other thing was the issue of a business plan that was discussed in the meeting, Ryan brought that to my attention.
It's actually not a business plan though.
Right, I went back and listened to the tape and business plan was used and I think in a generic sense versus, but it is according to the SSA, a program report which reflects what took place the previous years with the money that was spent by the SSA. And that, when Ryan and I were talking, the best approach on that, I simply made a suggestion and it's obviously up to the HDL GBA on how they want to pursue it, but taking something like the minutes which reflect every event and everything they do at each one of their meetings and do an executive summary, a simple executive summary above that, that may meet the requirement, that'll certainly get, the board would have to digest that information and decide if that was their information. And the last thing was, there was a conversation about the pins and Brian brought it to my attention and again, I went back and listened to the tape. Just so the public's clear and Vic made it pretty clear when we had the meeting last, in December, that the accountability for the pin numbers was agreed that the HDL GBA would be responsible for that, that they would make an assessment of square footage on how that SSA money is appropriated from the individual businesses. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong Vic, that the, part of that agreement, the new agreement in 2019 that was signed between the village and then President Mike Marr, was in part for that, so that the accountability for the pins fell back on the HDL GBA.
There had been some incongruities in some of the prior years and so that agreement essentially aligned what had been the practice and put the obligation on the, the HDL, or LGHGBA.
The STL, HDL GBA.
HTL.
So, just to.
I can't tell you how many different, those letters have changed. These guys.
So to clarify, clarify Vic, we basically realigned the documentation with the practices three, four years ago.
Correct. Correct.
So I want to, Ryan expressed concerns, he just, I think this call happened on Friday of last week or, and, or sometime last week and I went back to the tape and some of the, you know, certainly I think could have been taken out of context depending on what was being said, but I think there's a clear, clear understanding, correct me if I'm wrong Ryan, I think there's a clear understanding of expectations on the part of the board with the exception of when that report is produced, is, does it give the board, I will speak to that, I can't speak for our board, but it's, if, if it meets that requirement. But the pin numbers cleared up and the issue of the budget, which the budget doesn't get started until January, so we had that conversation and hoping that some of the tension would be relieved.
And also that is clear, there's a lot of conversations that happen beyond here, as far as like the pin numbers, the vacant property, the downtown, the property owners, the downtown and the village, we're in quick communication frequently. So that comment of we tore down a building, yes, there was a Red Oaks building that was torn down, there was two buildings behind Red Oaks that were not into that factor because they weren't, first of all square footage that was being utilized for real estate. When Red Oaks was torn down, the property owner, the downtown, were in agreement that we're going to incorporate that into that square footage with the, increase the square footage of the dance studio, so the, the whole square foot was still the same footprint just with the way the buildings were being utilized, so they were in agreement with that, we were in agreement with that, and then that was also expressed to you in November, December, to that prop as well. So I just, I want everyone to be aware, we don't make our decisions without informing you guys as the board, so that if questions were ever arise, we're all on the same page. That's where, we got to make sure we have facts out there because at these calls are recorded, people do respond and listen to these and they have been taking these conversations and say, hey, so what does that mean? So it's very important that we, we express the detail and make sure that we're all on the same page.
Didn't we take care of all this square footage stuff a year ago?
It was, this was done back, I think.
Or, yeah, no, I mean, we had a discussion a year ago, of a discussion the previous year.
I understand, but this is just, this is.
So we're, we're.
Conversations were, were.
Yeah, there was some, the way things were said or discussed, it implied that things may or may not be 100% in order and what Ryan wanted to do tonight and what we are doing is clarifying that it is all in order and that Ryan's agreeing to provide the additional documentation that's required and we'll have.
But, if I may, because I missed the meeting, the board's holding the funds until he does so, is that correct?
We don't have it yet, but yeah.
We didn't have the fund yet, we did.
If you had them, you'd, you wouldn't disperse them until he provides.
That additional information. But we don't have, we won't have until when.
But that was the action.
Yes.
Back in December.
Right.
Okay.
And we're all, I mean, we're going to, everything's going to line up, it's not an issue, you're going to be doing your budgeting in January, you'll have it all in time, it's not really a problem, so, to Greg's point, we should probably change the, when that information's provided in the resolution so that it matches what your schedule is.
It's in the IGA between the village and.
Or the IGA.
HDL.
Yeah, so we.
HD.
We should, HDL GBA Vic, we should change, I agree, we should, we should align those times to things that are, that makes sense for everybody. Am I making sense? You're looking, you're looking like, Bill, I'm not, I should not be talking.
No, you're good, why, I know, I just, I just.
Okay, oh.
Looked down for a second, so.
No, just, just prior to the date, so that's good, we should align those, so, the one thing on the, on the minutes and all of that, I mean, at the end of the day, the SSA says promote tourism and economic development, so to the extent the minutes can back that up, that makes sense.
I did not follow what she said. Anne, could you repeat yourself? I missed some words.
Sir, I'm sorry. I, I said, so, number one, I agree we should align our dates. Number two, in terms of minutes, in terms, minutes showing program report, I, the SSA basically says this is for promoting tourism and economic development in the downtown. So if the minutes support those goals, that sounds great.
Both, both minutes.
The HDL GBA.
Oh, your minutes.
What Ryan, what Ryan just.
In lieu of that kind of.
Do you want to tell them how to do their minutes? Oh, I, I.
I think that the issue was, of any special report, they might be able to submit their minutes to achieve the, the objective of the agreement to provide some kind of annual update and I think Anne.
Did I, did I mishear you Ryan?
It is, and remember, this report was adjusted about two years ago from our original requirement.
And I think that the objective is to have just some confirmation that those minutes will be reflective of the SSA purposes for promoting tourism and economic development.
Right.
And I think Anne, is that what you were concerned with?
Yeah, I was, what I heard was Ryan suggests that the minutes would provide that, an executive summary of the minutes would provide that program report and at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is connect that with the SSA goals of economic development and tourism. So if that, if that connects, then we're good, that sounds great.
Financial audit statement would connect that because it adds every detail expense, all of our activities, marketing, visitor center, so that clearly states that it relates to our audit and financial statements.
All right, I think we'll be okay with, with the idea that was proposed, so let's, thank you and.
See how it goes.
See how it goes, right, yeah, so we should be good, thank you. Thanks for coming today, Ryan.
Okay, could, I could just clarify the action of the board then on holding back the funds, is that negated? No.
That, we did levy the tax, so the monies will be collected.
I clearly understand that, I mean.
And it's just a matter of when we get them, if there's already been confirmation of, of performance under the different requirements of the agreement, then the monies will be released, if not, then we'll have to wait until they do perform and.
Okay, so, let me ask it again, so the action of the board in, on, in December, clearly made a motion and it passed unanimously to hold back the funds, now, does that forever? Is that in December? Is that in 2023? Or, or is that?
It was with respect to the levy that we just had. Now, we won't get.
Okay, it doesn't quite say that, but, so, I'm just going to clarify so that it doesn't happen again, so that it doesn't, on the next time, fall back to the action of this board in December.
Well, actually, the agreement itself says the release of monies are tied to that, the, the statement.
Oh, so, so then the, the action of the board was.
Was really reiterating.
Not meaningful at all.
Well, I think it was meaningful, but I think it was more.
No, but if it's in the agreement, then, then to, to take the action of the board, I, I'm, I'm trying to grasp how, how that, how that works.
I, I think that, at least it was my understanding, that the board was trying to make clear to, to everyone, including the HDL GBA, that while it's levying the taxes, it does expect performance in order to release the funds to the HDL, LGBA.
So that action is forever?
Well, that's in the agreement, so yes.
Okay, but then, so that was repetitive, the action of the board was repetitive. Okay, and I get, I get it now.
The question I still have.
I, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As a board, the question we've had now over the last week, we have a village trustee who depends on being affiliated on and participates in our meetings and our conversations, where they see the output of the activities. We have constant dialogue to the village, showing constant activities, what happens from a marketing standpoint, whether it's the branding, website, events, holidays, whatever that happens, it's an ongoing event. It's in, for, to be unseen that there's, show us the, the details that's there, you get an audit, the audit and statement, you're getting the monthly meetings, the monthly activity, you get the open dialogue, I don't understand how the transparency's not there. I just, I'm lost.
Yeah, I don't think it's a transparency thing Ryan, I think it's, I think it is the documents that are laid out in the IGA and if the IGA needs, if, what, if you were to, if we were sitting down, you were asking me, what's the approach to do this because you have ABC that bill, the requirements that are being sought, my recommendation to you would be to come to the village board and ask them to amend that, or amend the intergovernmental agreement.
Which, well, may I give you just some of the detail, again, this, this agreement that was completed, this updated agreement was done between a board member that did come to our board and has brought to you guys last year, this should have been any conversation that was brought to our board, really to the property owners that originally established the SSA, that was, there was a process that was never completed to amend the original SSA agreement to the board. So this was an amended SSA agreement that was changed two years ago that didn't go through the proper channels of what I think should have been done and was agreed on with Mike Marr and a trustee here that was brought to make the change. I think there should have been a process that, that this should have gone through, amended. And then the second part, the use of funds, I think that was another hot topic. The funds are for the downtown, it's not funds for other village activities, because that's something I'm dealing with right now that's really creating a lot of turmoil for me.
Yeah, it was never intended to, to be said, right, it was just a.
And that, that was observed then based on communication, that, please make sure that's.
Yeah, no, those, we, we do not watch your funds.
Okay.
Those are your funds, they're hard earned, they belong to the downtown and should be used for the downtown.
Okay, that's, it's, it's an issue that I'm dealing with right now.
Yep, just be clear on that.
Oh, that's been the whole thing for the SSA, it's very clear, it's only for the purpose of downtown.
Yeah, but there was a remark made that we could use them for other things if we deemed appropriate, right, if, if they didn't comply and that, that's where we went off the rails, so apologize for that. Yep. All right, I'm going to keep us moving, thank you. I don't see any, anyone from the public safety here tonight. So then the next thing we have is the consent agenda, we have the bills list, we have the treasures report, we have the minutes from the last board meeting and I think that's it, there's just three items on there.
Just the three.
Are there any amendments to the board minutes from last meeting or does somebody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Micho, roll call please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Right away, we're moving into other business, we have the village engineers report presented by engineer Perry who's sitting there on video tonight.
All right, so the, the engineers reports in the board package, just a couple things to highlight, there's a number of things on the, in the report that are going to be discussed later in the meeting, so I'm going to skip over those. First, number one, the RPC bridge, there's going to be a meeting on January 20th with trustee O'Connor, manager Jackson and myself to discuss the advanced warning and deterrent options. Number three, the checker road traffic calming, all of the data has been received and we're planning to present that at the next board meeting, January 31st, and that's going to be pending receipt of data from Buffalo Grove, just kind of going back a step, Buffalo Grove as part of the Lake Cook investigating project that's in the phase one engineering right now, they collected some data regarding the cut through, so that would be a great data point to have, to validate, you know, the data that we collected and then also kind of move that conversation forward, so we're hoping to get that here in the next couple weeks. The village hall expansion, that's one that I'm going to skip over for now. Number 13, this is the sewer lining project for Aptikissick Road, this is Lake Zurich's project. They had said that they were going to start that project in January, but the village still does not have a, an approved bypass and traffic control plan, so, and that plan, Lake Zurich has said that they would send that to Long Grove as well, just to have that and let the village have the opportunity to, to review it before it's approved, so, long story short, you know, it's already January 10th, I don't know if that project will happen this month or not, but I will keep the board informed.
Hey, Jeff, it says the plan was rejected by Lake Zurich, what does that mean?
The, the contractor did not provide a full detailed plan and they also provided a plan that would close access to the winery on the north side of the road and Lake Zurich had it in the documents that that wouldn't be allowed, so the contractor's back to the drawing board on that.
Okay, got it, that's what I didn't understand, thank you.
Not a problem. Uh, let's see, just jumping all the way down to number 19, there's going to be a meeting with Harbor Chase on Thursday with manager Jackson and myself to move the landscape discrepancy discussion forward, we have, so, the results of that meeting will be in the next engineers report.
If I can interject, if I can interject real quick, Harbor Chase is flying in, their vice president who handles this for all their facilities on Thursday to meet with us. We emphasize the length of time this has been going on, so, you know, hopefully we'll come to some kind of reasonable resolution. Thank you Jeff.
Yep, and then just two items that I wanted to mention that aren't not on the engineers report, first of all, it was brought to my attention that there's a light in the simple parking lot that's flickering, Wooton Electric is scrambling their forces to come out and address that. Last night I also noticed there's two lights on Archer Road that are out, so while Wooton is in town, they will take a look at those as well. And then the last thing, this goes back a few meetings, but the Lake Elinora Estates Homeowners Association had the failed drain tile that had been discussed at a few board meetings last year and the village assisted the homeowners associations in submitting for a grant from the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission. Last Thursday's meeting, the Lake County Stormwater Management approved the authorization of a $50,000 grant to the homeowners association for the replacement of the drain tile, so that was good news for them, so now it's in the homeowners association's court to execute that grant agreement and complete their projects, so, give the board the update on that one. Not a village project, but something that we helped with.
Nice work, nice work by the way.
So with that, if there's any questions, happy to entertain them.
I have one quick question and that is on Route 22, what's the current status on the easements?
I, let's see, the easements, you have not heard anything from the last time we talked about it with, they were still in negotiation to update a few of them and there were still some that were expired and hopefully the ones that are, if you're just recalling the conversation, there's some that were set to expire this year, so I do not know how IDOT's handling those, but.
Are, are they actually working on them?
Uh, that's what I say.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jeff? Just have to renew, I mean, so Vic, are you involved in any of that?
No, it's, well, that's, these are not our easements, we already have easements, ours are not on the clock, so this.
Okay.
IDOT had acquired some easements in conjunction with the construction and I think those are the ones that.
That's, that's what I'm asking about.
Expiring, so it's an IDOT issue, but it may affect the timing of the project if they're unable to.
Well, it just seems as if that project, the only time you get anything done on it is when you ask something and, and if we don't ask, we don't get, which is why it's so tardy in being done. One of the reasons.
Yeah, lots of reasons, but yes. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move to, it's item number 10, which is ratification of the tri-party agreement of all heirs, Bank of New York for collateralization, we had no choice but to do this at the last meeting and now we're formally ratifying it tonight, approving it tonight.
So moved.
Okay, so it was moved by trustee Borowski and it was seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer, roll call please.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. The next item is the consideration and discussion and acceptance of, and approval of the HDL GBA events calendar. I don't know that there really needs to be a discussion, right now it's just the dates and, so let's.
Motion to approve the dates for HDL GBA.
Okay, moved by trustee O'Reilly.
I'd be to Anne.
Uh, trustee Micho, seconded by trustee Micho.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, all right, so moving right along, the next item on the agenda is discussion, village hall renovation and expansion conceptual plan. Oh, we can, do we have Vic stick around anymore?
Oh, yes.
Sure.
Yes, so nice to see him.
Nice to see you all too, um, but I.
Do we need a motion to let Vic go?
You don't, you're, you're, but, no, I, I think that, you don't want to hear my opinions on the architect and I don't have any legal issues to, to address with it, unless there's anything in the trustee reports that need to.
Um, the only, the only other thing that I'll bring up that you may or may not want to comment on is that there'll be a capital planning committee ad hoc coming up, so.
And that, as I recall, what we're thinking about is having three board members, in which case it will be noticed.
It is noticed already.
But.
It has that, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the only other thing, so, okay, other than that, I think you're free to go.
Okay, please.
And move, move about the country, yeah, thanks for coming.
Sure.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is discussion of the village hall renovation, expansion, conceptual plan, so I'm going to let you lead this if you want, right, or no, or do you want me to bring up a diagram, you tell me how you want me to.
I, I would bring up the two old plans that were presented.
All right, so let me see if I can.
So, our, our first objective with the village hall was to look, could it be expanded and renovated on the existing property, there are certainly things.
Can I stop really quick, so we have this funding coming from American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funding, right, so we have over, we have. So we have over, we have, we have over a million dollars. So we have this like opportunity to do something that we wouldn't normally be able to do. And one of the things that the board decided to do, zero in on potentially expanding our village hall or doing something with our village hall. I mean, the space, you know, it's nice and cozy, but, uh, we could use a little more. So I think that's the backdrop. So we, we hired an architect to try to come up with some plans. And so we got a first look of what this might look like. And so that's what we're looking at here.
And, and,
Can I add one thing, Bill? One, one thing.
Yes.
It's not just cozy and it would be nice. It's, it's not accessible. We need one more bathroom. It, 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 it actually could, it could benefit from investment.
Well, and, and let's go down that path. So, uh, face it, um, people are retiring, like Jim Hoag left, right? Other people will retire. It's going to be harder and harder to get staff here, right? So we, we need to keep up, um, and that's part of it, right? So it'll help us, uh, you know, retain people and, um, hire people. And you're right, I mean, it's the one bathroom, you know, it's a little too cozy for me too, right? I agree with you.
Well, the appraisers call it functionally obsolete floor plan.
Functionally obsolete floor plan, there you go.
That's a good term.
Well, and the attic upstairs is really nice for office space, but it's just that, an attic, right? So.
Frightening.
It's got some unique features, including running water, so.
There it goes, there you're going.
Yeah, there you go. All right, go ahead. Sorry, before I get us in more trouble.
So, uh, we brought the, we brought the first concept and this is using, uh, and I can't speak to when that portion where the current offices are now had a remodel.
Oh, let me share. Did I, I'm not sharing this, am I, right? No, you guys can't see it online, can you? Let me go back to Zoom. Uh, share, 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 share this. There you go. All right, so you can see it now, right? Correct?
There you go.
Yeah, so the, um, the, we, we took into consideration the work that would have already been down, done here on the first floor some years ago with, with the remodel of, uh, what's the building department as well as administrative support. And looked at that and how we could repurpose that, uh, space. We don't have a conference room where we can have any meetings whatsoever with vendors or even for staff. So we looked at, uh, with the walled architects, the potential of creating a conference room and what they identified was the area that Kirk houses, building and permitting, uh, which will allow us to have a small conference space. The small conference room that you see, uh, over here is misnamed. It is actually, uh, the board office. So it's space for them. It's the mayor's office. Board can use it for the purpose of having meetings with constituents. Can also serve as a small conference room if, if that was the case. So, um, the staff restroom will, will remain. There is no place for staff to gather lunch. When a staff member needs lunch, they take it from a small college dorm refrigerator and they, if they're not comfortable sitting in here, they go out to their cars. It's really, uh, we'd like to give them some space to prepare some food and then sit in a conference room and be able to have lunch and at least be able to relax and get away from their desk. Uh, this, this will end up being the main entry into the administrative section with a counter so we could, uh, greet, um, the residents and contractors that come in. With this space being utilized between, uh, the management analyst, uh, the, um, Sheri Administrative Services, Margarita, her position as building impairment specialist, and then an extra space for whatever planning operations we would have.
Can I do one thing too? So the, just to be clear, this area right here, if you can see my mouse, move along. This is the existing village hall as we know it today. So this here is all, would be all an addition. But this is the, uh, footprint of our current village hall. This is the main entry that you all came in right here, right? This is where you come in today. So just be clear on that.
Would you clarify that you'd have an actual office here?
Uh, no, it'll be, uh, it'll be an office that'll, any trustees or anyone else can use. So he was calling it the mayor's.
The sheriff's.
The sheriff's office, mayor, board, whatever.
Okay, so you're not going to get instanced here?
No, no.
Okay.
That looks like a good conference room you could use for, you know, meeting with any of the people we have intergovernmental agreements with too.
Yes, definitely, no. I'm the, I'm the one exactly when it was written on the thing, said mayor's room. I go, no, make it just office that everyone can use.
And so we would say it was the mayor, board, conference room, whatever. The, um, then what would be created is an entryway from here, uh, going back to where this addition would be. So we would end up having a door right outside here, which would lead into where the boardroom would be. They would come in, they would go to the boardroom. The second version you see or the mayor, or the mayor's going to show in a minute is where the boardroom gets more space and it's pushed up. And I think everybody who's talked to me about this saw that as being the more preferable, uh, version. Bathrooms, but,
Greg, 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 can you repeat, what did, can you repeat that? Sorry, I didn't hear.
The second version of the, of this, uh, of this concept, the second concept that was presented, everybody who's communicated with me has felt, uh, more positive toward, uh, towards that one, which is the one that you also communicated on too.
What, what happened was,
Are you saying the bigger one?
Yeah, the bigger one, yeah.
We want, we want to spend more. Is that, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm saying that the, so first off,
A million four isn't enough. We need to do a million six.
Well, okay, so that's all debatable too, because if you look at the numbers they put in there and you look at how the offices are, it's going to get a lot closer together, just on how we designed it.
Yeah, this was, this was, this was initial numbers that we, we got from them. We went back to them and talked to them. We said, do we really need the work on the electrical that you're describing? Because we have, what about the fact that we bought a new furnace already? You know, so we talked about a number of things that we don't think need, um, that was brought up that'll reduce the cost.
In the way that other,
What's the square footage difference between one and two?
Do you have the actual square footage?
But it's, it's in there. It's on that other attachment.
Let me, let me go, because what, what, one of the things that I looked at was that this design right here didn't make our village hall that much bigger. And if you have the document, you can see it. So the question was, how do we make it a little bit bigger? So if we change the footprint this way, it made the, the boardroom a lot bigger. And so one of the things that we also noticed, or I noticed, that the way this was conceptually designed is these offices are really big. So there's, I mean, who's going to use an office that's going to, it's 242 square feet? That's huge, right? That's, uh, that's as big as my kitchen, right? Uh, which is pretty large. So the thing was, is that these were just conceptual plans put out there, uh, was that we could actually take this footprint here, pull it back if we shrunk these offices down and made them smaller. The square, the square footage of the boardroom will be larger, will have space for it. And, um, the, the price difference will, will come down because we really have, these are really huge, uh, you know, huge offices. I mean, um,
We went back in, uh, to the contractor or to the, I'm sorry.
Ten by 18 is 184 square feet. That's huge.
Yeah, so we went back to the contractor and said, bring it down to 130 feet, uh, on the, on the managers and 100 feet on the assistant village managers. Because of the norm, the corporate, we started talking about corporate numbers. I went and looked them up, are 90 to 150 feet.
Right, right.
So, uh, that brings it down and the cost that preliminary costs associated with bringing that down is about $60,000. Trustee, uh, O'Reilly asked the square footage, 2,700 on the one and, uh, 3,160 on the, on the other one.
But that's before it was,
That's before we did, I think, right, correct. Um,
And, and I see value in making sure that the event manager and the assistant village manager have, you know, the opportunity to have, you know, um, uh, manager staff conversations that you can close the door and have a conversation and not feel like you're in a closet.
And with this, with this all in too, I mean, this includes talking about the fire, uh, fire sprinklers that we're going to have to have, that, that price is included in this. There are a number, there are a number of things they're going to lay out more specific, but they wanted to give us general on this. The issue with the washrooms, as Vic and I were talking today, is that state law says you can no longer describe men or women's washrooms. They have to,
I, I would hope so.
They'd have,
I think we're beyond.
They'd have to be unisex and any washrooms that are open to the public also have to have a baby changing station.
So either way, we'll have two new bathrooms.
Yep, we'll have two new bathrooms. We'll have the mechanical and electrical room, storage space to cover our supplies. We use that small closet up here now and then the, uh, and then the boardroom.
We open for comments or questions or?
Oh, totally, yeah, totally. And I, I mean, the only other thing too is on this, this, uh, what is it? $300,000 for the renovation of the existing village hall, right? Where, where is it here on the amount, the total amount of the renovation of the existing hall? 306,000, just a comment. I mean, the roof and the building is new. So I mean, there's stuff in here that needs to be pulled out. It was just a, you know, estimate and everything on it. So you got to look at it with a fine tooth comb, because I started going over the weekend going, well, why do we, why do we need a new roof when it was put in 2018, right? I mean, do we need, are these, do these windows have to be replaced now? Talking,
These windows, maybe not.
Maybe not, right? So all those, all those things have to be hashed out, but he threw it all in the list. And so if you, and if you, if you shrink this a little bit down, you know, move it down this way, shrinking these offices, which are huge, not that you still don't want to have good sized offices, they're just huge. You'll, you'll, you'll pick up, you know, you'll leave, you'll pick up square footage in the, in the boardroom, but you'll shrink the footprint a little bit so the cost will get closer.
What they did was when they did the measurements, they went upstairs to the offices, did the measurements and just used those, because that's what upstairs is. The, uh, the shoring of the floors has to be done, uh, in talking to the, uh, artifacts. We had a physical structure engineer come out here and said, even with the remodel, we have to do that. Um, the outside siding of this existing building, because it's wood and they're showing rot already, it's going to have to be replaced to reflect whatever we put on the outside or just to keep the continuity. The, uh, upstairs they deemed as unusable. So that absolutely will be not usable. We may be able to use it for storage, um, some light storage, but short of that, so. I work with.
So, uh, may I remind you, this is all being recorded?
All right, I've got a couple of comments, questions. So, um, I don't see any like emergency exit out of the main boardroom. To me, if somebody walked into that hallway and came down, it's actually, you don't have no place to go.
Sort of, sort of like this over here.
Yes, exactly. So I think there's some, ought to be some means to exit that building in an emergency. Or if the mechanical room catch on fire, there's no way out except through windows in the back. But I just thought about that. Um, from a hospitality perspective, the walls that separate the village manager office and its storage room, I wonder if we can, like, to your point, Bill, about squishing the offices down a little bit, but put in like a little hospitality counter or a little closet that we had opened up that is coffee pot or something kind of, you know, if we want to have a reception in this space instead of just a meeting, you know, a little hospitality.
What a good idea.
Just ideas, Fabio.
Yeah, I'm glad you had a comment.
Chris, you are always so thoughtful, Chris.
The storage room is important and needed. I wonder if so, if that wall can be flexible, if we ever need an oversized wall capacity space in the meeting, we can put chairs in there instead of the door. So instead of all those walls being solid or whatever.
Like a good floor.
Yeah, or something like that. Maybe we could put a couple of extra chairs in here if we needed to, um.
You wouldn't be able to see much though.
Well, yeah, I know, but at least we still got people that can sit in there at least, right? I get it. I understand that, Reed. I understand that completely. I agree. Um, the, the bathroom for the staff toilets, since we have two nice, large, accessible toilets, do we need to keep that staff toilet in that spot? And the reason I say that is if you have your little kitchenette right across from it, why not scrap the kitchenette and put it in that little toilet space in there? That way you have a walled in area where somebody go in, cook their Spaghettios and have a seat and a chair. Um, because you've got, you know what I mean, like, you want to get away from your desk, right? Not on the toilet, but just on top or some, or counter or something like that way. Now, some little food pantry in there instead of that kitchenette. Cause I, I don't think people want to be cooking their Spaghettios out in a little kitchenette area, which I think is important to have. I think people need that little break room, if you will. That could be a little break room. But what strikes me the most is we don't have any flexibility for future growth. The four workstations are great given the current staffing, but what if we were to put two or three or four more people in here down the road, right? We need some space and put some food for that thing.
Well, and the thing is, is this room will fit, because essentially it says room will fit more than four workstations, right?
Right. Okay, good point.
So, so the thing was, and that's what I was just, you know, it just was the way it was drawn and you wouldn't put them all in the center of the floor.
We thought about putting them down the middle and we went and visited one of the new village halls that were constructed and they divided up work functions and they had multiple.
Okay, does that, that layout with that wall looks like there's a lot of wasted space towards the bottom?
Oh, yeah.
Whatever, whatever direction that is. And actually to me, that long hallway leading into the, the boardroom, to me, looks like a lot of wasted space as well. Even though I know we need a hallway and you got chairs and people and everything, it just seems like a really big space to me.
Well, it'll be small.
And that'll get shortened when it comes,
When you come down, right.
When you come down.
And, and would it narrow up or is that ADA right now? Or what is, what is the width of that? Cause if you look at the scale, it's like it's eight foot hallway or something like that.
Well, the other thing is just keep, this is just a conceptual plan. It has to be flushed out, right? So it was,
And what we talk about here, I can bring back to them and they can give us additional, you know, take the CAD and work it.
Yeah, of course, of course. I didn't know how much is structural versus how much is, you know, non-mobiliar and all that, so I don't know.
And it's flat, it's a flat foundation with no upper levels. So that, and it's got to help us to some extent with, so, on, on the new site, on, so.
It's also, that, that floor plan. If someone comes in that, that door, they have to walk through, I think it's that, that door, no.
No, it'll be locked after, after hours so that you,
Okay, so, so during business hours,
Yeah.
You come in, the vestibule.
Right.
You have to walk through the, visitors walk through the workstation area to get,
Yeah, they have a, there's a brand new, there's a brand new door, uh, here. So there'll be a doorway over here that you come to the boardroom.
I understand that, but if I'm here for business.
You're going to come up to the counter right here and everybody's going to be sitting here.
So see where it says vestibule? That's the only place where the public will have access to where the word vestibule appears.
Well, then how are they going to get to the washroom? If they're here for picking up permits or checking on something, how are they going to get,
We will let,
They have to walk through the workstation.
No, we would let them in the staff washroom, but if the staff washroom's gone, that's a good point.
Right. All right, so how, how often do people come to the village hall to use the restroom?
No, because they're like, but if you, if you have a vendor meeting.
We need to play the people go downtown. This looks good.
I'm sorry, Reed, I just asked a question. No, it could happen.
Escort them to the restroom. About that too, like what if somebody visiting wants to, you know,
They walk through the work area. You're not going to say go around outside.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of awkward that way, yeah.
I mean, it works, it works for, If you leave the staff toilet there for that reason.
Or if we, or if we don't, to walk a vendor through our area to go to a washroom because they're having a meeting with us, I don't,
Escort them through.
Yeah, I think could have been, but the, the observation was something I, I didn't catch, so.
You haven't had to go to the bathroom yet.
I, I, I hold it, I, I wait till I get home.
You got the key, you can open the door.
And what happens to parking?
Well, it's, as far as what we've determined, uh, not much. It's, it, the parking, the only impact you're going to have is you're going to have a doorway over here. What, what the decision's got to be made when we get to that point, if this is the way the board chooses to go, is the discussion about the Ruth barn, because there is going to be impact to the Ruth barn. It's going to have to be relocated. And when I talked to Jean Premack, Jean Premack, when I spoke to Jean Premack, she came in and she wanted to talk and she said, I heard the board's going to move the Ruth barn. I said, there was no discussion about that. I said, it's, it's a concept that we're working on and, and she goes, um, she just wanted to be included in the conversation should the board make the decision. And I assured her absolutely that would happen. When I was talking to the architect and I talked to Jeff, we had said, where would it go? Could we put it out in the parking lot where the current dumpster enclosure is? And potentially relocate that dumpster enclosure. So that's kind of what we're looking at now. But this does not come out any farther than this does from the face.
I see.
So it's, it's exactly the same, so.
How much does it cost to move a barn?
We got it. It says $10,000 in here, so.
Probably a piece by piece. That, that, that barn is not structurally sound.
Right, and you have to be piece by piece.
It's almost, it, it seem, it would seem like a piece by piece. And, and almost reconstructed. And that, that could be a great village project. Really.
Yeah.
There, there is no better way of getting people involved than having a purpose. And if the purpose is to do something creative, it, it, it could be a great thing to, uh, get people to, to, um, to do. There, just, just as a point of remembering, there was no better involvement in this village than when the Historical Society took over the farmhouse and, and money had to be raised and people came out time after time after time and, 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 and were very, very involved in the village because of it. Because there was purpose in doing so.
We'd have to find our residents that are engineers.
No, they have to find. It's not our barn.
Whatever. Did, if we salvage everything that's good, tore this down and build new, they give us any numbers on that?
We didn't go that way with them. We went with this, the first concept, see, up to it.
What if we put a second floor on? More expensive?
On the, on the new building?
There was a concern about, um, the snowdrift coming off the new building into, yeah, into here and what it might do to this.
So, the roof of the new building cannot be any taller than the roof of the current building?
Or somewhat close, right, so that you didn't get big snowdrifts coming over. So, there was, you know, cause that just, you know, could damage the building.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
But it, there, you know, so, I don't know, this is functional space that still can be used, right? Um, it's historic, right? Uh, and-
Is this, is this now?
No, this isn't, but that other building is, right? This was added on and, and-
I'm sorry, what's this?
Oh, I, I was just, I was pointing to the, uh, to, to the, where the, the boardroom is not historic, right? That was added on, if you will, right? But the other building is, main building is.
The Drexler.
Yeah, the Drexler ta- tavern, right? So, the, the thing is that, but, but we could all stay here. This addition could happen and things could be moved around and you could make this work real easily. It wouldn't be a whole, you know, moving out everywhere somewhere else. So, this, the way this is being proposed, it'd be like a room addition on your house. I think it would work out pretty well, in my opinion, but.
You, usually renovations cost more than if you built the same straight up, you know? Just because you always, they always run into stuff you didn't anticipate, but, and that's just nature of it.
So, they estimated the square foot cost would be about half as much for the renovation as for the new portion?
Yeah, probably.
But that would be including all kinds of new stuff that we don't need in the old building.
Was any consideration given to a basement?
Jeff, are you there? There is a discussion about the water table and-
Yeah, I'm, I'm still here. Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, Greg, that's exactly what I was gonna bring up. The, uh, soil survey had a high water table because of the wetlands primarily in the back there. So, um, we could ask Wold about it, but I think that the water table is going to be a concern that they, uh, they would bring up.
I, I, I'm sure Rita and I have probably been in, what, ninety percent of the houses in, in Long Grove? Um, and, and I can't think but of, of, a small handful that don't have basements.
It'd be extra mushy, though, here.
Well, except that it's, it, it's relatively less expensive to put in a basement, um, than, than, than building above ground.
What would we do with the basement?
Well, uh, it, we, we, I don't know who I had the conversations with originally, maybe Bill Balling, um, about the, the exorbitant amount that we spend on, uh, storage for our records. And of course, that ties in with the water, of course, be, being an issue. Um, but it's, maybe that's an incentive to start getting them recorded so that we don't, don't have a, a paper problem. Um.
Well, that, I agree with you, Bobby, that-
I, I can't, I, Rita, what'd you say? I can't, I guess.
A walk-up attic.
Oh, that, that's true too. That's true. Yeah.
But, but I think-
We talked originally about storing things upstairs here, but I'm not so sure that floor can physically support a lot of heavy paper.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it might be cheaper to shore up than to build a second floor or a basement, I don't know.
This is Ann. I don't, I don't think we should. I think we should spend that money digitizing.
Yeah, that's where Bobby started going there and that's what we talked about a while, digitizing the documents, right?
The, the, yeah.
That's what Bobby started saying too.
And, and as a point of information to, to that, to that end, I, we, we're, it's our intent to present to the, uh, Capital Improvement Planning Committee on, on Thursday with part of our technology, uh, is the digitation, uh, digitizing of the records. We've already started working on costs on that.
That's the long-term solution.
Right.
If you're gonna add a, you don't wanna add a door out the back where your staff's gonna be? Cause obviously that nice corner back there, you're gonna make a nice scenes, obviously in your summer months.
We've got doors there now.
No, oh, you're doing back here?
Yeah, we got doors on both sides or on the one side where the, actually both sides where that conference room's gonna be, in the back.
No, I'm saying, right, okay, where your, she had a floor table, floor staff right here?
Putting a door right where Bill, uh, Curse is at.
There is order.
There is, okay. I see the door open. Oh, that, okay, so that, that stays, okay.
Well, so here's the thing, this was still, um, we got a few minutes to look at this and then it was like, okay, this is great, but, you know, we're really not gaining that much space in the, in the chamber, right? So, how do we change it a little bit and we gotta re-swizzle? But some of those finer points gotta be all figured out, right? It's a conceptual plan and what do people think? And then we asked for, you know, an estimate on pricing and then it was like the most expensive thing you could possibly have, right? Through everything in there. And that has to be looked at more closely too.
And they sat there and said to us, they, in fact, I think in one of the communications, uh, Mike, Matt Pickle from Wold said, um, we wanna get this in within your budget, so let's figure out how we can make it work. And when we went back and started talking about the roof and the electrical and the windows, he said, our people looked at that as if you were gonna, he said, you may not need to even do it right now, so.
So, what, what drove the design to have this courtyard as opposed to?
Conservancy. Yeah, let me, um, you're looking at-
The other design, we're getting too close to the wetland, like we're going right up to the edge of the wetland.
We can move those.
Can move the wetland?
That's what the developer tried to say.
With the second design, you can get more square feet by going in a direction away from the wetland cause you can't go into the wetland.
The other thing Vic and I talked about today, cause Vic looked at it and I wanted to make sure, okay, tell me about my ADA, tell me about legal, you know, things that I should be looking at in case I missed it and kind of explain to him what I saw. One thing that he brought up a pretty good idea and, and it didn't dawn on me until I looked back on past, um, on my, with my past employers is if the village board decides to go into executive session, they have to ask the audience to leave. It would be nice if the village board had the opportunity to go to a adjoining conference area for executive session and potentially not displace the, uh, um, residents or the guests in the, in the, in the gallery. So, we had talked about, is there a potential of doing a bridge or a breezeway across from that courtyard that you're just describing?
Yeah.
To, cause it could end up, once this is all laid out, running adjacent or parallel, I should say, to the, uh, new conference room. All you would have to do is walk in through that door and, and the board would be able to turn around and have their meeting in that side conference room.
But after the executive session, it's anyway, except you terminate the meeting.
Yeah, let me-
Unless, unless there is action coming out of the executive session, but if it's just a discussion.
Okay, so I put these up here, um, and, uh, Ann is looking at them. She's texting me right now. Um, but we, oops, that's made it too big, didn't I?
Yeah, something, something.
The issue we have is the conservancy. Jeff, you wanna help me here? Cause this is, we're running out of, if, if we wanted to make this bigger and go this way, we'd run into the conservancy, the wetland.
The wetland, yeah.
Kind of forced us to shift it, um, up this way because of the, this is all the wetland over here. As the building is, if you wanted to grow to the east, back on the other diagram, if I bring it, you, you start hitting the wetland. You're touching the wetland, actually. So, you really don't have much more room to go this way. So, that's why Jeff and the architect said, you know, if you go out this way, you can fit it into our, you know, the footprint that we have.
I think what you were saying is why have the courtyard? Why doesn't the new, doesn't just abut the north side of this? You know, why have that open space? Why do they do-
Why isn't it a square instead of a U shape?
Exactly. And maybe you narrow up the hot, and the barn can stay there for whatever reason.
It, it just had, I think it had to do with how do you, how do you get into the hall and access and everything like that? You started-
I was thinking lighting too. It's gonna be pretty dark in that courtyard. Grow a lot of moss. Better than a wall.
Yeah, true. But it's single story, so you could have skylights.
So, would you suggest something like, like shifting, let's, let's just forget about the storage space in the door, that shifting that door over and moving that over? Is that what you're?
That the, the part of the new building that makes it a U?
Mm-hmm.
Push it over to abut this wall instead of having a courtyard.
You mean push it over here?
To the right.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting. So, if you move this wall over here and just shifted this over, is what I think you're at, saying, right?
I'm saying, move.
Go show them.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not tracking.
I'm not sure you just move the building blocks like that, but I think, I mean, we got a U shape. The question is why isn't it just a square?
Why don't they all of that real estate move it left and make it a square?
Rectangular.
Yes, a rectangle.
All right, so I, what I don't know, and I'm not a historian, is how do you touch, what do you do with this building? You know what I mean?
What do you do?
Can you touch the, can you, can you touch the historic building, right? Or should you touch the historic?
Not like a landmark building. Actually, we learned, correct me, trustee Kritzmeyer, if this is incorrect, but we learned in Springfield that we can do whatever we want to, unless, that's historic.
Oh, that's true. I agree with you. But I mean, do you want to touch that? Just, do you wanna, I mean, do we really wanna touch and, and open up that whole discussion with the Historic Society, who else will get involved? Because they were part of the, of, of getting this building in place, right? You know what I mean? The Historic Society was born to, to build this Village Hall, right? Or to bring this building here and, and build the Village Hall.
Yeah, Rita, Rita, I agree with you, like, from the letter of the law, absolutely. You, you can touch things that are historical for sure. It's a question, the, the question is, do we want to? And I think it, it might all, almost be an engineering and practical question too, do you wanna touch that wall? But I don't know.
Right. Oh, all right, so then you're thought to move the boardroom over. And, and I don't even know if it, it would make a difference or not. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Well, basically, basically-
Not true. Go ahead, go ahead, Ann.
I was just saying, Chris's point about making an emergency exit, maybe there's something more practical, all of leaving that courtyard open, but making it more usable space, not just dead space.
Yes. Yes and yes.
You could bring the garden in that's gonna get destroyed and bring it over there.
Well, just face southerly, correct? Am I, is my dyslexia kicking in?
No, this is, uh, this is-
You got a bunch of agonias and mint.
You're gonna have, like, nice ferns and ivies, yeah.
Agonias.
Jay's plant, right, Jenny?
Yeah. Which is fine. A lot of mint in that garden.
What do we look into establishing this time?
Yeah, but that's, that's kinda what that garden is.
I think what, I think what, um, we were looking for, um, is, is something like this, uh, uh, something you'd be interested in, in, in flushing out more and getting, getting finalized, right? Is this something you would want to see happen with our ARPA funds? And, I mean, the thing is, we have to move pretty darn quick if we're gonna actually use the funds for this.
The, uh, I, I think the objective is Wold, Wold wanted to give us some concepts to look at. If we, if, if, if the village board was, you know, one or all, you know, the concepts or pieces of it, however we wanna do, adding the comments that the board members gave, then they would, uh, talk to us about the next step of creating the RFP to go out and, and put it to market.
You do whatever you want on the RFP. I wanna look at some other options, though. I mean, is this the only place where everyone's not considered, you know? Thought we thought, we thought about putting a building up somewhere else, if that makes it cheaper and land we already own, or?
Well, I think that was part of the discussion to see if this was the right way to go or if there are other options that the board wants to look at.
Well, so far you've given us one option. That's great. Or two, that's great.
So, um, as I recall, the architect did mention that it could cost more to go elsewhere, in part because you have to build from scratch. You need a new parking lot, for example. Um, he mentioned that renovating that space costs about half as much as building a whole new facility. So, if we wanted a whole new facility with the same square feet that we're seeing in that drawing, it would cost more cause it's all new instead of new plus renovation and then the additional things that we need because it's a brand new facility instead of an existing one. So, the cost could potentially be higher. And then what do you do with the existing building? That's a question we'd have to answer.
There'd be land acquisition involved too. We, we-
Land acquisition?
I, I think this parking lot's gonna get trashed during construction anyway. They're bringing bulldozers in and whatever, whatever. But, um, I, I would be interested in hearing something about, um, green building, environmentally, uh, friendly kinds of buildings, flex space, you know? Why, why build for what we know our need is now, while that is important? In ten years, maybe nobody comes into work anymore. You know, I don't, I don't know. But if, if, if this were visionary, what I, I use the word visionary, then there would be more flex space that it could double for this, move the wall, bring the wall in, the, the workstation. Whenever you have to walk through a room, whether it's residential or commercial, you know, it, it's not a hallway and you can't really use it the same way if you think of your kitchen table and the sliding doors behind it, you know? What else are you gonna do there? So, I, did they talk about anything like that?
We wanted to get a very basic concept to, to show it to the board and then ask what, for example, which you talked about, about eco-green, the Deer Park, uh, Village Hall that they constructed, they did it Leeds-wise. So, I mean, they, they took all environmental issues into, in fact, they put a outside garden that was watered, that, that watered from the sprinkler system, uh, through there. So, they, I mean, they were very eco-friendly with that.
I mean, that's who we used to be, more environmentally tuned in. I hesitate to use the word solar panel, but we, we have furnaces. What about o- other kinds of heating and cooling?
Those are all, all things that when we go-
All it takes is money.
I understand.
So, what do we take away in order to afford that stuff?
So, whether, whether we, whether the board decides to move forward here or at the new sub, with the new building, the specifications for what the board wants in, in regards to Leeds or eco, that gets built into the RFP.
I understand.
So, but.
Wasn't there a meeting or two ago, talk about the fire department moving and that?
Yeah, we're, we're some time off on that. First of all, they need to go to a bond, uh, for a bond referendum, which is, uh, at least, um, not, they can't do it in, in November because there's not, they have to wait a full, almost a full year and a half before they can go to referenda. And then by that time, I, I asked Paul, I asked Chief Segala about breaking ground on that and he said probably it would take us eighteen months to two years after, uh, it was approved. Um, they, they are continuing to look for land. Uh, right now, they're in discussions with, uh, Sillage to take three acres over on the Omen property cause that's in the product, that's being demoed right now. Um, so, yeah, we've finally, uh, fortunate to get that going. Um, and, and, uh, I, trustee O'Reilly brought this up a couple of meetings ago, but to you, to your point about a couple of meetings ago, that we had talked about an ideal thing for us, uh, if, if that was to work out and it doesn't look like it will, um, for us to share space with perhaps like the HDLGBA in there and because it's such a sizable piece of property. But that doesn't look like it's even gonna come to fruition for some time. And, and quite honestly, the, the electorate could turn around and vote down the referenda and then-
Sure.
Can I, can I do this really?
So, basically, the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Ann, go ahead.
I was, I was just clarifying, understanding what you're saying, Greg, is the timing is off. The, the, the fire department is gonna be too far out and if we wanna use ARPA funds, we need to do it sooner than the fire department's schedule would permit.
Much sooner, yes. Much sooner, yes.
Right. And there's no guarantee they'll even move in the first place.
Agreed, okay, alright, thank you.
If they go for referendum and the president say, um, no on the referendum, then it's dead, right? So.
Gotcha, okay. My, I'm just clarifying my understanding, I appreciate that.
Can I just go around the, the room here and just, um, kinda find out where people's heads are at? And I guess, I guess the question I wanna know is, do you wanna stay here, or do you wanna go? Right? Just, just that one question, and I don't know if you can answer that or not, and maybe it depends.
Which that on, well, the.
Well, I mean.
Stay here or what?
Stay here, meaning, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we have this building here, we've been here for a long time, we own the land, um, depending on, you know, we can design and addition many different ways, but do you wanna stay here? And do you wanna protect, you know, the village hall and, and what's been here for, for many years now? I, I guess I'd like to know the answer to that question versus, um, you know, really pushing to go somewhere else, right? And I, I guess I'd kinda like to know where your heads are at of that. And I don't know, Chrissy, I'm not sure I got an answer from you.
Well, you didn't, I'd love to have some options to really think through that. I, I don't know if there's another piece of property that would put a box on that is, um, professionable, professional, amenable, but yet not too over the top, that's within budget? I have no idea, I can't, I can't throw it out and say that. Would I like to stay here, sure. If that plan makes sense and it's within budget and it's reasonable, meets most of our needs, all for it. I have no issue being here, I don't, I just don't know if comparatively, that makes sense to do something differently.
Okay.
You know, I, I mean, we don't need to build Vick's offices in terms of architecture. We need a nice, professional environment, that's all we need. We're not building another historic building here, we're just building office space. You know, by today's standards, it's not like super elegant, it's more industrial than it is elegant now.
Right.
So, I, I mean, I'd love to stay here if it makes sense and it's within budget, I have no issue with that.
Okay. Bobby, can I ask you?
I, I, I would, um, definitely wanna stay here. Um, one of the things that we're not seeing today, that we've certainly seen prior to COVID, and that was hundreds of children every year coming to this location. And if we're not here, and the barn's not here, and the school isn't used, might as well tear them down. Um, but we, we will hopefully, if, if we ever get straightened out again, um, start having these buses that arrive in the spring and in the fall, and bring these hundreds of kids, um, to see this location, thereby encouraging their parents to know we're here, and this is what we do here. Um, that, that's a big reason to me to stay here.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, I'll move over this way, Jenny.
Um, I feel a lot like Chris, I mean, I'm not supposed to stay here. Um, I just, I, I will echo what Rita says, being forward thinking of the building, and, you know, I, I manage an old house, which this is, and there are some issues and installation issues, and so making something that's a little bit more forward-thinking as in building is appealing to me as a person, but I do value the historical value of being in this location. So I'm, I think this has a lot of promise, I just wish there wasn't another option, like comparatively, but I would not be uncomfortable with it.
Okay. Um, Rita, and, and the question was more along the lines, should we stay or should we go?
Yeah.
Just look at that title.
Um, I would lean towards, uh, maintaining, retaining the historical aspect of the building, since this is not historical.
Oh geez.
I have no problem with that, but, um, I, I, I think there's a, there is value, whether it's, it's, um, tangible or intangible. I, I agree with Jenny's thoughts on it as well. If something opened up that made more sense, that was, um, uh, acceptable, usable, the right thing, I, I would like to consider it. You know, there, there are other, other renditions, options, blah blah. We, we know we need to do something.
Well, I'm not sure I got clear direction from you, but.
I think.
It's not much of a choice, it's like, here's this plan, you, you okay with it? Well, yeah, well, there are options, right?
Yeah, and I was more about, do you wanna stay here? I mean, I was just trying to get to, do you wanna stay here? Physically stay here, right? How this building looks and how it works out, it, it, you know, it can change, right? I was just, that decision of, and, and everyone's saying, well, but I wanna know what else could we, where could we move, blah blah blah? But just, there's some, there's some value in just staying here, right? Uh, and Bobby did a good job of articulating that, uh, and some of the reasons why, and so that's why I'm just asking the question, right?
I understand.
Just something about you being on eighty-three as well and getting visibility. I mean, we're tucked away back in a corner here. Unless that bus pulls up, I'm afraid kids don't know there's a root barn or, or, uh, or a schoolhouse over there.
There's outhouses back there too, just.
I didn't mean to, I'm sorry, I'm, you know, we're back off in, off in the middle of nowhere here. You wouldn't know we're here unless you knew we're here.
That's why all these hundreds of kids are so important, cause they tell their parents, that's where the village hall is.
So, so let me ask two other people, cause I wanna ask trustee Kritzmeyer, and I wanna ask Kent Tanucci, trustee Tanucci too. So, um, Ian, I'm gonna, can you answer that question?
Uh, Anne, yes, I can. Um, I think, I, I'm, I appreciate the, and I, and I agree mainly with the comments from Chris and Jenny and Rita, that I, I, I am very comfortable staying here within budget. I think the challenge with your question, Phil, is staying is pretty, it's got more definition, and going doesn't have definition, and that's, that's the challenge. I, within budget, and we don't know what that budget is. One of the things I've also asked, and I, it's slight tangent, I am fearful of, once we touch a historical building, what does that mean in mitigating mold, or asbestos, or lead paint? I just, and we've got two realtors, and so I put my faith in them, but there, I know those things seem to be, those scare, they, they make me fearful about surprise budget. But we know where this village hall is, people know where it is, we can market it daylight, and if we can expand this in a way that allows for growth and the things that we define, we want the new expansion to do, I, I'm, I'm good with staying. But I think going, we don't have much definition.
Got it, great point. Um, Kent?
Um, yeah, I'm in favor of staying. I believe it's more cost-effective to renovate the existing building, and we can simultaneously renovate it and respect the historic nature, and then add on as in option two, you know, with tweaks here and there, as we discussed. But, yes, I'm in favor of staying.
I don't know if that totally helps us or not, cause we're a little bit split there. Um, but does that give us any direction, is that what I'm saying? Because we can get caught into analysis paralysis, and maybe it's the right thing to do, trying to find another location.
You know, trustee Tanucci and I had, uh, looked at properties that we could lease, uh, when we were, when we were concerned about, okay, should, do we have enough space, could we lease it? And it's always better from a, from a public sector standpoint to own the property versus lease, you know, to, to lease space. Uh, the property we looked at certainly would serve our, or the location we looked at certainly would serve our need, but where it was at was, it was right next to Salem Light Field Red Landmark. Um, so we went on and looked at that. If, if the board wants, I can ask the question, I don't know what it would be, but if we had space, land, how much would it cost to put a light site, square footage building up on that property? Ground up versus renovation and whatnot. Um, there's always the issue of water, there's always the issue of sewer. Um, you know, we're certainly have to, we're certainly gonna have to turn around and sprinkler wherever we go. We don't have to do it with the old part of the building here, you know?
We should.
I'm, I'm not dismissing that by any stretch, but I'm just saying, um, some of the things are already here in place. Um, so I would anticipate, but I am nowhere near an expert on, on anything like that, to turn around and say that the, the costs may end up being more.
And again, if we were to leave, what happens to the existing building? We continue to maintain it at an ongoing expense? We buy an historic building, because we don't need it anymore? That's a whole other can of worms.
Move it for a couple hundred thousand, or more. That'd bring the kids.
Alright, so how do I, um, so, so, um, Greg needs a little bit of direction. Uh, I'll tell you, I'm in favor of, of adding onto this building. Um, I like option two if it's tweaked a little bit, right? So I'm totally in favor of that. We got these funds, um, I think we can get it pretty close to, um, where it needs to be. We're gonna have to spend money eventually on this building anyways, and some of the things, so the, some of the things in here will probably, would have been done over some point in time anyway, so. Um, but I'm, that's, that's where my head's at, just, you know? I don't know how we give, you know, Greg's direction to keep us going.
I, I like option two, and I, and I very much echo Chris's comments about emergency exit, um, growth opportunity, uh, you know, is the technology taken care of? Can we make this green-oriented?
Yep.
If you're gonna build a structure, does it have to be connected to the existing, or can it be freestanding? So that you can, Burnet Township has two buildings. They're rebuilding the, the community service building, where they hold their meetings. Office space, that's the lease house.
If we turn around and have two separate buildings, and we're gonna have the village manager and the assistant village manager going across a courtyard to turn around and get to a conference room, there's some connectivity things that are a benefit.
No, no question. And you have to ask, how often does that occur? And, I mean, it could be managed.
But what would be the advantage of having two separate buildings?
Well, then you wouldn't, you, you may be able to mitigate your wetland question. If you move it over by where the circle is, that doesn't work.
Oh yeah, we started looking, we did start looking at some of that stuff. In fact, we walked the property, said, well, we, look at, look at it like a campus, and we'll put it up on the top of the hill. But then the wetland got in the way too, and we got into, it got into like this, sort of if we moved the barn, we, we got the most, the easiest way to sneak this new structure in. But that was, Jeff, you can, you were out here when we were walking the property, right Jeff? Remember that?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, so.
Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, correct, the Army Corps of Engineers would have to get involved, and then it just got, started getting really complicated in a hurry. And that's where somebody said, well, what if we move the barn?
And then you have to build a bridge to get over the wetlands to construct a new building, and.
So we got into all those scenarios, so we started, that's how that, and then that's where we got to. Maybe if we moved the barn, we, we have the spot right, right out here that we, you know, it would work. So that's how that happened, so. Well, alright, so I don't.
How big is this property?
Um, it's very big, but it's not all built, right?
Lot of wetland.
Jeff, is it five acres, six and a half?
I'd be guessing, but I think it's in that ballpark, but yeah, you're right, there's, there's wetland on it, there's for, you know, wooded areas around it, so it does drastically reduce the, um, buildable area. Exactly.
How much of the, let's say six acres? Do we know how much of that is buildable?
Uh, we could look at the, um, the different maps, and Lake County GIS, I think, has all that tabulated. Just haven't looked at it, and have that at my fingertips right now.
Then again, you'd be putting a separate building, completely disconnected and across the stream from here. That seems to be very disadvantageous compared to option two.
Well, I remember my remarks saying that, you know, is that, cause I think we have a, is it a, is it a creek? And I kept saying, no, it looks like a ditch to me, right? But I was corrected, so, protected. Like, that's a ditch, no, no, it's a stream, I'm like. Cause, cause apparently it's on a map somewhere, it's a stream, but I'm like, no, it looks like a ditch to me, right? But, oh well, I tried.
Theoretically, could the barn be up next to the schoolhouse?
Well, we have a little bit of an issue, right Jeff? Cause what we would be doing is taking our septic field and moving it up there, so.
Well, but can it, could, could they coexist?
How could they coexist, Jeff, what do you think?
I, I think they could, over there. Uh, when we were walking the property, you know, we were talking about getting it over the, uh, protected ditch, so that, that would be a logistical thing to work out. But, uh, I think there was, I think there's enough space to, for both there.
So when you look at many, many options, it seems that both option one and option two are the best approach if we're staying here, cause we avoid the wetlands, we have a place to put the septic field, it, it all works.
Alright, so we're, um, Chris is leaving.
I mean, we're.
We're, we're stuck here, so, alright, so, um, we just need to.
We're stuck, and then we're gonna tweak option two, it seems like option two is what everybody sort of is leaning towards tonight. So Greg's got some direction to start tweaking, so, I mean, if you guys come back to us with one option, and then tweak it to everybody's names, you know?
I get a course next step.
Okay, alright.
And it means budget.
Alright, so let's keep, let's keep this moving, everyone good with that direction? Okay. Alright, thank you Chris for that. Glad you put your stuff in your bag and your, on your way out of here. Um, okay, so, uh, village president trustee reports, I have two things to mention. One is, you know, I did attend the final Route fifty-three, uh, meeting, which was on Friday the sixteenth, the resolution passed. Um, I think we're gonna have a presentation from Barbara Clip at, at our next board meeting, um, cause more work needs to be done, but the resolution did pass, right? Which is great news. Uh, and, um, the other thing I need to mention is that there'll be a capital planning, ad hoc capital planning committee, uh, next week, that, uh, Rita, trustee O'Connor, trustee Tanucci, and trustee Kritzmeyer will be, uh, a part of it, Thursday of, of, uh, Thursday of this week, not the next week, Thursday of this week. So that's all I have in my report. Uh, trustee Brodsky?
Just a couple of things, um, manager Jackson is taking a look at just kind of a simple occurrence where, uh, municipality, and the neighboring municipalities police were back on eighty-three again doing some traffic, uh, patrolling. So we're having a conversation with the neighbors to see what they're up to and understand that a little bit better. Um, local meeting is on Thursday of this week, I read through the agenda board tally last night. Um, pretty mundane stuff, I didn't really see anything in there that was, um, you know, super new or super, um, questionable or remarkable. Um, I, a lot of the municipality, a lot of municipalities are moving to that third bin, the compostable bin. So I expect that when we have the next, um, waste management or, or, I shouldn't say waste management contract, but the next round of contract negotiations for our trash service, I would expect that we are starting to talk about that third compostable bins and kind of moving towards that.
How does that?
Sort of compo- compostable program.
Keep it in the garage in its things.
Yeah, pretty much.
What about the mowers?
Well, there's some challenges. There are a lot of challenges, I'm not sure you wanna do it, I'm not sure it makes any sense, cause I really truly think I have a compost bin sitting right there that's doing the job for me, and I don't know if I need it personally. Um, but, you know, we have all different communities, I don't know, I don't know what the reaction is, or. There are compo- compostable bags that are being issued in like, um, higher density cities, where people have this plastic bag, which basically has a, like a, an insert, a compostable insert. You throw your food scraps in there, you close the thing up, you put it on your, on your balcony, as an example, where you put in your garage, and that seems to be gaining some traction as well. Um, but circular economy in the, and, you know, as much as we keep out of landfills certainly is, is a priority, so. Um, anyway, we're not having a discussion yet, but I expect that next contract go around, that'll be a topic that'll come up for sure. Um, and, oh, um, I wanted to talk to, uh, village manager Jackson, we had some very great conversation. Now, I'd really like to take some action to move the festivals, um, not only the festivals, but the other running events towards the, um, zero landfill, um, target and goal. So we probably need a little bit more dialogue with you guys, and with the other organizers of the different one events, to make sure that we're not putting stuff in the landfill, rather than all compostable or all recyclable. And I really guess the main steps towards that are right with your reusable cups and all that, so maybe there's a lot for that. That's all.
Alright, thank you, trustee Kritzmeyer?
Nothing.
Okay, trustee Michal?
No report.
Trustee O'Connor?
Just a suggestion regarding the 53 corridor?
Yes.
We might be, it might be of us to come up with our resolution that, that mirrors the resolution that was already set, just because of the noise.
Yeah, we can do that, and I, you know, we didn't have time to do it before the vote, so we can go back and reaffirm.
Right.
The vote that we did, absolutely, yeah.
You know, the state plan, our comprehensive plan, our mission statement, and.
Yeah, so, okay.
Couldn't hurt.
Couldn't hurt. Anything else?
Uh, no, the next step is taking this to Springfield, so.
Okay.
That'll be.
Yes.
That'll be a challenge.
Thank you.
End of report.
Uh, trustee O'Reilly?
None.
Trustee Tanucci?
So, I just wanted to mention that I've heard lots of compliments about how the downtown looked through the holiday season. It's really beautiful, and we're going to make things this year compared to past years. So, it's definitely been noticed. One thing I wanted to bring up is, we have lights around the bridge, around the perimeter of the bridge. They look really pretty, I even noticed driving in today. I wonder if there might be any consideration of just leaving those on year-round, take down the wreath and the garland, of course, but just leave the lights, there's a nice sort of centerpiece of the village right there.
I thought we, I thought there were lights on it. Is that, am I remembering?
I don't think so, no.
A year or two ago?
We, we used to light it at the downtown.
Yeah.
Many years ago, but if we do that, if we do that, we should try to use the LED lights where you can actually change the color scheme based on what the atmosphere is.
Oh, because you can make it so that you can theme it for the time of year, and I think it could be utilized.
If we do that, we can do that at the downtown, if you guys would suggest that. Again, that's, it's, we have to have a good dialogue. The lights will all be down in downtown, you'll probably start getting requests. We were waiting for the film crew to, you know, to finish the film with the snow.
Yeah.
They'll just wait for one snowfall to come in, take some shots, and then all the lights will be downtown down. So, then on the list of time, you guys start getting requests, hey, when are they coming down? It's because of the movie.
I'm afraid it won't be snowing any time soon.
It could be out still, that would work.
But still, the bridge looks really pretty.
I agree with you.
Why only have it this summer of the year?
Yeah, we could, we could, we could do it at the downtown, if you like, if you like the idea.
Anything else?
No, nothing else.
Thank you. Village managers report?
Three things real quick, the owning properties demo has started over there at the greenhouses. It should be totally raised, except for the house over there. Our, our neighbors in Briarcrest are extremely pleased that we're making progress on that. Budget discussions are taking place, budget process is taking place, and we're dealing with the vendors right now, and we're seeing some increases in services that we'll share with the board at budget time, but we're fairly close to discussions ready. And then the, President Jacob's already brought up, the CIP meeting's on Thursday. That's all I have.
Okay, if nothing else, I'm looking for motion to adjourn. Okay, approved by trustee Michal, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Michal. Hi. Trustee O'Connor. Hi. Trustee Brodsky.